We're going to call to order the September 18th, 2017 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome. It's good to have everybody with us tonight. I'll remind everybody to silence your mobile devices if you would please. First order tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're very happy to have with us tonight Reverend Sheldon Davis from Oak Grove Missionary Baptist Church for our invocation. Yes, please.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this another opportunity to call upon your name and thank you for your many wonderful blessings. We ask and pray that your blessings, your mercy and your grace will be upon this Commissioner tonight. Bless every individual that is represented here tonight. Be with them, bless them, keep us all safe from all hurt, harm and danger. We pray that you would just continue to lead, bless the Commissioners, lead this county in the right direction that you would have them to go. We thank you for all that you're doing. It's in God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us. Yeah, I would also add that he is chaplain for our sheriff's department also. We appreciate your service. We're very happy to have Youth Commissioner with us tonight, Napur Pareek. Welcome. We're glad to have you here. First up is approval or correction of our minutes. Do I hear a motion that minutes are approved as presented?
Chair, I'll let you make some notes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Next up is approval of the agenda, including the changes to the agenda on page 203. I would also like to add one item which will be G6, and that will be a discussion of our representative to the Central Island Council of Government Executive Committee. So do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to recognitions and presentations. We are very happy to have several guests with us tonight for Local Government Federal Credit Union Excellence in Innovation Awards. And at this time, we'll hear from Carl Clark and Matthew Gunnett. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
And you're going to start with the EMS, right?
Correct. Yes, right.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Gunnett. I'm the Membership Services Coordinator for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Our association supports and promotes the well-being of all North Carolina counties and empowers through advocacy, education and research and member services, all 100 counties to work for the betterment of the entire state. I'd like to thank the board for having us here today to present this great award, actually two great awards to your county for the second year in a row. It's a very, very high honor that not many counties get to get four of these in two years. So this is great. We encourage county personnel to become involved with the association by joining a steering committee. Steering committee's participation is not limited to commissioners and managers. We have many participants who are department heads or other county personnel. First meetings begin in October. Please Google NCACC steering committees to get more information and access the signup form, and you can contact me for more information on how to get involved in any of the association programs. And this is the best part of my job and the reason that we are here. It's fitting for me to note that Ralph Ketner was a native of Rowan County and co-founder of Food Town, now known as Food Lion, and he began this awards program in 1991 under the name the Employee Productivity Awards. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our current sponsor of these awards, the LGFCU, and Carl Clark to say a few words about that organization.
Thank you, Matt. Again, my name is Carl Clark, and I'm a representative of the Local Government Federal Credit Union. And we are truly honored to have the sponsorship responsibility for the Innovations, Innovation Awards, which have now evolved to become the LGFCU Excellence in Innovation Award. In addition to the county's monetary award, the credit union will also host an awards reception at the next North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference, where we'll recognize award winners and talk about some of the innovative ideas that have come from not only our winners, but some of the other 100 counties across the state. Local Government Federal Credit Union is the only financial institution here in the state of North Carolina that caters specifically to municipal and county government employees in the state of North Carolina. Anyone who is a full-time, part-time volunteer, elected or appointed government official is eligible to serve, or I'm sorry, eligible to join our credit union. And it's a credit union that serves that population. We want to take our time and opportunity to recognize those agencies that are excelling in innovation with these awards, and we could not be happier to have the opportunity to participate in this year's award presentation.
Matt?
All right, thank you, Carl. Ten awards were given in four categories: general government, human services, public information and participation, and intergovernmental collaboration. A diverse base of judge was selected, including county commissioners, managers, clerks, NCACC MPA County Management Fellows, MPA student interns, budget analysts, and DSS and EMS directors and supervisors. These programs were all judged on four basic criteria: is it innovative? Are there measurable results that demonstrate improved service delivery or cost improvement to county programs? Can this project be replicated in other counties or jurisdictions? And are you likely to recommend or implement this program in your own county? Submission period was March through June of this year, and this year we had 48 submissions up from 42 last year. And as I said, tonight, we were pleased to present two awards to Cabarrus County. First award is for development and implementation of the EMS Health Data Exchange Program. This program stood out within our human services category by providing a direct cost savings to Cabarrus County of $4,000 to $6,000 annually, and it accomplishes this by helping in four key areas: improving patient safety. The EMS Electronic Patient Care Record, or EPCR, is available for immediate review or use by the providers at hospitals. This allows hospital providers to see the whole picture and treat the patient with a 360-degree view of what happened from 911 call to arrival at the hospital. Next, it also improves care quality. The EMS crew can view the outcome data for patients they transport. This allows for the EMS crew to learn and use similar cases to improve care for future patients. It also optimizes operations and billing. Cost to print and deliver reports is mitigated both at the hospital and for the EMS agency. The bidirectional feed also allows the hospital to provide an EMS agency with insurance and demographic information that is required to bill the call in a timely fashion and be reimbursed to meet revenue goals. It also meets clinical, helps in meeting clinical benchmarks. EMS care is integrated into the EMR so that treatments and interventions are immediately recorded for cardiac, stroke, sepsis and trauma benchmarks. This also allows EMS to monitor internal metrics based on clinical outcomes in the hospital. The team members for this program included the entire EMS department, who at this time I'd like to ask to come forward. And with that, I'd also like to turn it over to Justin Bryan, Specialty Services Supervisor, to speak about the program.
Thank you, Matt. You did a great job summarizing the program. I'll just want to point out that this was truly a collaborative effort, which is part of the category that we submitted this project under. We essentially served as conduit between EMS agencies throughout the region, as well as ESO, who is the software vendor that we chose for this program, and Carolina's Healthcare. So a great deal of funding came from Carolina's Healthcare for the program, and we served as the conduit between the EMS agencies in the region to essentially make sure that everybody had a seat at the table. We went live in June with about five test sites, and the project and program is working beautifully. The goal eventually is for all of Carolina's Healthcare to be able to accept the electronic record from an EMS agency and integrate that directly into the patient's EMR in a very timely fashion so that we have improved patient care and outcomes throughout. So it's been a great project, a lot of meetings and a lot of folks at the table, but we've had fun doing it. So thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you. And with that, we'd like to present a check and trophy, a check for $1,000 for the EMS program of Cabarrus County.
All right. Thank you. (applause)
(inaudible)
All right. And... Our second award goes to the Out and About Program. This program stood out within our public information and participation category by addressing the mission, goals and actions that are included in the county's administrative strategic plan. It highlighted services, programs and events to help increase public awareness and participation. Findings from the county marketing survey done annually regarding the local government channel indicated that 49% of citizens were aware of the channel, and of those, 67% find the programming informative, entertaining and helpful. More than half of the respondents said they were very or somewhat informed on government issues, which was a significant increase from the previous survey in 2014. The public taping also allows constituents to interact with the commissioners and guests before and after filming takes place. Team members for this project include Board of Commissioners, Steve Morris, Chairman, Diane Honeycutt, Vice Chair, Elizabeth Poole, Lynn Shu, Blake Keiger, and Grace Minat, former Commissioner. It also included David Baxter from Cabarrus County Cable Television, General Manager of Channel 22, and Jarrett Glass, Cable Television Producer. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jonathan Marshall to speak a little bit about this program.
When I'm done, I'm also going to ask our Commissioner to make, our Chair, to make a couple of comments, because this is in fact a Commissioner's program. This is part of your strategic plan. So when we get together for our retreat every January and we sit down and go through that strategic plan, which is always at the end of the agenda, and you're all looking in with glassy eyes because we've had you for two days going through these things, somewhere along the way, a couple of years ago, you said, is there something we can do where we can get out and talk to people directly? So it's not just feedback on television, it's not just feedback where people are sending us emails, where we have a chance to meet with them. So the Out and About Program was a creation of that, or came out of that thought, to take your strategic plan and for you to go out and discuss specific subjects in the public, in a restaurant, coffee shop, on location. So it gives us a chance to broadcast those on Channel 22. It gives us the opportunity to show those on our YouTube channel, but more importantly, it gives you an opportunity to go out in the public and have people who are watching, sometimes participating, and if you watch them like I do, I'm often watching in the background how people are taking note of what you're doing. And it gives them a chance as you go around to different parts of the county to interact with you. It is just in general, one of our tenets of communication that our communications and outreach pushes us all the time, and that is communicate on every front you possibly can to make sure people are getting the message and getting the information. And with that, I did want to recognize myself, David Baxter, and Jared Glass, who actually go out and do the work part of it. And Commissioner, I hear you.
Thank you, Jonathan. It's been a great experience. I do recall that glassy-eyed night when we did have this conversation a couple of years ago, and it has worked out extremely well. It does give us an opportunity to be in places around the county that we might not have otherwise, and to interface with folks, and I'm very surprised at the number of people that I see out in the community that comment on each episode, regardless of which Commissioner it might be. And contrary to what Jonathan might lead you to believe, this was not an idea that was hatched out of commissioners getting to have lunch at different places around the county, which he has accused us of that in the past. But we very much appreciate, David and Jared are the ones that make it happen. You know, we have that conversation in a late-night meeting, and that was about the extent of our involvement. Now they call us up and say, you be here on this day at this time, and we get there and everything is set up and running, and all we do is start talking, which we're all very good at, talking. We like to talk a lot. But we certainly appreciate the Local Government Federal Credit Union for sponsoring this award and for allowing us to participate in it. And thank you, Matt, for being here. I also want to mention that David Nicholson from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is in the back. We're happy to have him with us today. He is the, looks like he's the official photographer. David is a recovering county manager, former county manager, and so he expressed to me that he was so happy to be here, that he was going to stay through our entire meeting to the very end. And so I'm calling on everyone else to help me monitor David to make sure that he does that. Thank you.
Could I just say one thing?
Absolutely.
You know, you have a good idea when people copy you all over the place. We presented, we showed this at one of our state conferences, and there was a lot of interest from different television producers in trying to duplicate this format, because they'd never seen anything like this and they really liked it. And I had the privilege of speaking at a national television conference last week, and especially the West Coast people were really interested in this. So I just wanted to, so people would come up and they'd say, so how do you do this? And I said, well, it's real simple. You get commissioners who are transparent, who want to communicate with their residents, and the rest is a piece of cake. So thank you very much for all your support.
Right. And the one thing that I would add to that is having staff people to work with, like you guys. That's what makes it truly work, and it is indeed a pleasure for us to go to state conferences where Matt recognized us there as well. And so we get to stand up, accept awards, accept all these accolades for all the hard work that we don't do that you guys do. So thank you very much. Thank you.
That's truly, that's what we like to hear, is that the programs are spreading. That's the whole point of this, so that's really great to hear. So I appreciate it. And so we'd like to present two checks to Mr. Baxter and Mr. Glass for the Out and About Program. Thank you.
Great.
If y'all would stand, since this is also your project, so we can get you all in here too. That'd be great.
We appreciate you being with us. Yes, sir.
Before we move on, I just wanted to make a comment about the Out and About Program. To my knowledge, and David, you can correct me, but I think though, for the most part, we've had input from Commissioners and various departments throughout the county. But I don't know that we've had any from the citizens, though, where they would like to know about a certain subject, you know, something that's on their mind, that they'd like to find out about, and they'd like to submit that to you so we could do an Out and About Program on that particular subject. So can, if you would somehow get that out to the public so they would know that if there's a subject that they are interested in, whether it be planning and zoning, or whether it be taxes or whatever, you know, we could do an Out and About Program to help inform our citizens about that. Thank you.
I think you, I think you just put that word out, so hopefully we'll hear back from some folks. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, we also have another new face at the front tonight, and that is Terry Hugie. She is our new clerk, and we are very delighted to have her. Welcome, Terry. I'm sure that all of you will get a chance to get to know her as we go forward, and I think that'll be a good experience for you. Next on our agenda is C2, and we are very happy to have Phyllis Winget from Carolina's Healthcare System Northeast with us tonight for a presentation. Welcome, Phyllis.
(inaudible) Just first want to start off by thanking you for the opportunity to be with you this evening. This board as a institution has always been very supportive of Carolina's Healthcare System Northeast and all of our efforts, and want to thank you for that. You're always there when we ask for your assistance, whether that's at local events or for support when we're in Raleigh or whatever it might be. And to thank Mike Downs as well for the opportunity to be here and to give you an update on the hospital. Excuse me. We are celebrating our, okay, that's right, we're celebrating our 80th anniversary this year, and part of celebrating our 80th anniversary, we wanted to give an update to all of the local municipalities within the county about what was going on at the hospital. And so I'm going to be very brief and high-level about what I felt were the key things that you might need to know to give you an update on what we're doing, and be happy to answer any questions for you after I'm finished. First, just very briefly at the system level, Carolina's Healthcare System, and then a little bit about Northeast, particularly very few slides about an overview of what we are about and what we're doing, our new construction program, which we call Modernization, a little bit about community benefit, and then the 80th anniversary. Carolina's Healthcare System. You know, we have new leadership. Gene Woods is the new CEO and President of Carolina's Healthcare System. Gene is a very charismatic, energetic leader. He also has a national platform. He is the Chairman of the Board of the American Hospital Association, which represents about 5,000 hospitals in the country. So he is able to bring, from that experience, up-to-date information about what's going on nationally, as well as take back a local and a North Carolina perspective. One of the first things that Gene did when he came to CHS was try to learn about who we are and what we had been about over the history of Carolina's Healthcare System. He visited all the facilities. He spent some time here at Northeast. But more than that, he got out around the system and talked to all of the teammates at CHS Northeast. And from that exercise, he developed with the Board of Commissioners of CHS a new mission and vision statement for Carolina's Healthcare System. That new mission statement says to improve health, elevate hope and advance healing for all. To me, that resonates with us as residents of Cabarrus County and the role that Carolina's Healthcare System Northeast has played in this county over its history. It says that we will, you know, focus on the health of our community, that we will take care of our patients like they're our family, and that we will continue to try to get better, so that you would choose us in terms of being your healthcare provider because you want to come to the hospital, not just because we are the only hospital in this county. And so that mission statement has generated a lot of enthusiasm and interest among our teammates, and a lot of energy around some of the new things that we're working on. CHS is growing rapidly. These are some statistics about the size and the scale of CHS today: $9 billion net operating expenses, 40 hospitals, 35 emergency departments, an umbrella that includes about 65,000 employees, and 25 cancer center locations. What that means in terms of the announcement that was made two weeks ago, that you heard about us coming together with UNC Healthcare to form a cooperative operating company, is that it gives us a huge scale, platform on which to springboard and work on some important issues around the state, including rural healthcare, which is a challenge for both of our systems, behavioral health, medical education. This gives you a little profile of what it means to bring together UNC Healthcare and CHS. CHS has 40 hospitals. UNC has 12. Of those 40 hospitals, 31 are acute care. That means the other hospitals are things like rehab and specialty hospitals, long-term care hospitals. 12 of those are owned and 19 are managed, and at Chapel Hill, UNC Healthcare, six are owned and six are managed. You see the difference in the, excuse me, the annual operating revenue, $9 billion and $3 billion, and about 100,000 teammates or employees across the state that will be under this umbrella. What does it mean in terms of the benefits of the joint operating agreement? Here are some of the major benefits of the affiliation, but I think to me, the most important thing that I would like for you to take away from this, is there are more questions than there are answers right now in terms of how it actually will come together and how we'll operate? But the focus areas initially are around those areas that I mentioned early. How can we improve healthcare to rural North Carolina? How can we improve behavioral health services across the state? How can we work on medical education and research that will advance care within North Carolina? So over the stage that we are at now is there are groups forming after the letter of intent to look at this affiliation was announced. There are groups forming that are working on the details of what this will look like from a structure and a services point of view. I think you read in the paper that both of us will keep our independent organizations initially, and that the new joint operating company will come together that will work on these initiatives as a joint unit. So we are excited about that and the opportunity that it has for us to do some things that we could not do if we did not have all of these locations across North Carolina, many of them in rural areas, many of them where we need to address how can we do things differently as we're being challenged by affordability and by access issues in the state. With that, what's going on at Northeast? You know that our healthcare system at Northeast is also growing. We've been growing a lot the last couple of years. Our primary service area is Cabarrus County. As you know, we're the sole community hospital here. Our secondary service areas are Rowan and Stanley. For both of those areas, we get lots of patients. We call it outmigration, of patients that come to Northeast for tertiary medical services. And about seven years ago, we determined as a system that we would position Northeast as a regional referral center. So over the last seven years, we have been working consistently to expand the services that we offer at a high level of care. And you will see that we have been successful in getting regional referrals into CHS Northeast. Here is just our facility overview profile. We are Level 3 Trauma Center. We have a Level 3 and a Level 4 Neonatal Intensive Care Unit. We recently applied to the state and were able to convert additional beds to Level 4 beds so that we can keep even smaller and sicker infants. We have a family medicine training program where we have residents every year, and that was in affiliation already with UNC at Chapel Hill School of Medicine, so that brings that relationship closer. And we have two freestanding EDs in addition to our main ED, one in Harrisburg and one in Kannapolis, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about the one in Harrisburg, which is our newest ED, which is growing rapidly. The specialty tertiary services areas that we have and that we've been working on for the last seven years around cardiology, that's Sanger Heart and Vascular Institute Concord, around neurosciences, the Carolina's Neurosciences Institute Concord, around our women and children's services, and then around cancer, the Living Cancer Institute Concord. And you know that we're a fairly large hospital. We're the 14th largest hospital in the state. These are the statistics around Northeast. We, on any given day, have about 260 inpatients and another 50 OBs patients, patients that are actually in a bed in the hospital but aren't in an inpatient status. So we usually average around 300 to 350 patients at any given time, 22,000 discharges a year, about half of those discharges coming from patients that come to our emergency department. So 12,960 people admitted from the ED every year. We have 21 operating rooms, and last year we hit over 6,000 cases. For a long time, we'd been about five, but the operating room is growing rapidly, and this year we are going to do about 6,243 procedures in our operating rooms, 250 open hearts, about 2,000 live births a year, and 566 million in net operating revenue at Northeast, which has grown about 150 million over the last five years. This is just to say that we're on track for about a 2% growth this year, and we're meeting our budget targets. Won't spend any time... Won't spend any time there. These are the things that I think are fairly exciting and new for us over the last two years. First, in terms of tertiary growth, about two years ago, about a year and a half ago, we had a local surgery group come to the hospital and say that we think that we can do a better job with surgical care at Northeast, particularly with patients coming through our emergency department. Those surgeons actually joined the staff of Northeast, and now we call them our acute care surgery program. They sleep in the hospital 24/7. They're general surgeons. Patients that come to our emergency department that need surgery, evaluated immediately and taken to the operating room 24/7. We recently did a look back at this program and found that our care had improved, our complications were down, our time to surgery was down, all that the stay in surgery were down, and that we actually, this program is paying for itself. It's been a huge win for the hospital, and it's actually significantly improved the care of surgery patients coming to the operating room, the fact that they're there 24/7. On cancer, we've expanded this year our cancer institute with more infusion beds, and we will open this fall before the end of the year, a Phase I clinical trials unit. This will be one of the probably five in the state where we will be able to allow cancer patients that come to Levine Cancer Institute Concord to have Phase I drugs. These are drugs that are just coming out of their testing in animals, and the first time they will be used in humans. There is one at LCI downtown, and they're expanding that to where we'll have a Phase I clinical trials unit at CHS Northeast. So we're excited about that advancement, as well as we move towards being more of a tertiary hospital. In cardiology, we recently opened a new EP lab with state-of-the-art equipment. Dr. Jane joined us in July. He has already doubled the number of electrophysiology cardiac procedures that we're doing. This program will move to the new tower when we open our new Heart and Vascular Institute in 2019. So this was a transition move. And we've just opened a new observation unit. Observation patients were spread all over the hospital. We felt we could do a better job with those patients if we co-horted them together. They rapidly turn over. They're rapidly assessed. These are patients that don't have a 24-hour stay in the hospital typically. So we opened a 23-bed observation unit in July, and that has also proved to be successful. Emergency Services, Harrisburg. These two freestanding EDs have been phenomenally successful. Within the course of three to five years, both of them have grown to about 30,000 visits a year. That's the size of a small ED in a hospital, particularly a rural hospital. Kannapolis opened in 2004 with seven treatment rooms. Already, we'll have had to expand. We have 10 beds under construction, five vertical and five more beds where we would bed pages, patients. It's the third busiest freestanding ED in CHS, and about 3% of their patients are admitted. So we look to expand that to more services on that campus as we go forward and as demand and to meet the demands of services in that area over the next couple of years. You heard a little bit about this earlier. We partner very effectively, I think, with the county and particularly our EMS services on many fronts. We were the first hospital within CHS to stand up a hub for stroke patients. We have, the Carolina Stroke Network has two hubs. One is at CMC and one is at Northeast. We were the first spoke of that hub because of the strength of our neurology department at Northeast. It's always been an area that we focused on. We have a very large neurology group. Last year, we had three neurosurgeons join this community and works exclusively at Northeast, have expansive telemedicine services. We have in-house neurologists that are in the hospital 24/7 for stroke patients. So we were in a position where we could become the first part of that hub. We have nine facilities that send their stroke patients to Northeast. These are smaller facilities that don't have neurologists on staff or available to support those patients. And so we look at them over electronically. They can look at the scans in that small hospital, whether it's Stanley or Lincoln Hospital, and if it looks like the patient has a stroke and that there could be an intervention, we have interventional radiologists at Northeast. The patient is sent to Northeast, and we are intervening within that window where we can make a difference. So there are nine facilities that we can support in that manner. And last but not least, our modernization project. Many of you know that part of the reason that we joined Carolina's Healthcare System in 2007 was a desire to expand our services as well as build a new tower and capital to make that happen. After study, that project became a three-phase project where we had the renovation of Maran Cannon Hayes, building of a new tower, and then the renovation of the older buildings from the 30s and 40s, GH&amp;J. Every decade, the hospital has grown and added a building since the 1940s, and then this is just an example of what those buildings were, including bed towers, medical office space, the surgery center, a new women's hospital. So there was a need to make some additional capital investments as those buildings have aged. The first phase of modernization was a renovation of Maran Cannon Hayes, which became our women's hospital. That has been completed. That was a $14 million project that focused on infrastructure and aesthetic renovations. The second phase is to building the new tower, which will become the Heart and Vascular Tower, cardiac cath labs, interventional radiology, operating rooms on the first floor, critical heart beds on the second floor, and then step-down progressive beds for cardiac and vascular patients on the third floor. And then the last part of that project will be to renovate the older buildings, GH&amp;J, and a gut rehab that will start after 2019, reduce the size of those nursing units, and make them more aesthetically pleasing so we can deliver state-of-the-art patient-centered care. This is what Maran Cannon Hayes looks like post-renovation. As you can see, larger, family-friendly rooms, increased light, use of artwork, and more pleasing to moms who want to deliver there. That was completed last year. Here is the rendering of what the new heart tower will look like that's under construction now. It will be consistent with the other buildings on our campus. The first story is the outpatient lab, cath lab waiting area, that lung structure that you see on the side. And the tower is actually four stories that you see next to it, that will sit right to the left of the fountain on the hospital. There will be, eventually, there will be a continuous walkway, covered walkway for patients there to connect all of the buildings. This building is under construction now. We had to move all the generators and electrical power to the new energy plant, do a lot of prep work. We found rock, that kind of thing, but right now, the foundation is scheduled to be laid over the next couple of months. We'll start to see still go up at the beginning of next year, and it's scheduled to be completed in 2019. And then these are the older GH&amp;J buildings that will not start to be worked on until after the new tower is up, so that we can move patients in and out of those buildings and have a place to move them once the construction of the new tower is up. So the dates on GH&amp;J are to be determined. It will probably take three to four years to vacate those buildings, renovate them, move patients in and out and back and forth. But we will end up with some of the newest, most state-of-the-art facilities in all of the CHS facilities by the time we're finished with this project. And then last but not least, two more items. One of the other emphasis that Gene brought with him was a commitment to the community, particularly looking at population health. So there has been a lot of work done on how we could look at building healthier communities and the footprint that CHS serves. That translated into some specific focus areas and a better accounting for the community benefit that we provide. A community benefit for CHS is $1.6 billion across the footprint. For CHS Northeast, it was $107 million in 2016. And the focus areas are on life indicators, on mental health, on healthy behaviors, tobacco and obesity, on clinical indicators, improving access, and the specific community outreach effort that CHS is going to build a robust platform around is food insecurity. Expanding beyond the walls of the hospital to address what we think are issues in the community, and the one that we've picked that we think we're capable of assisting with that's a little bit outside of our norm and that we want to work on is food insecurity. I think that's very consistent with what we were working on before this was identified, which was childhood obesity, and helping to change the way that children in our community eat so that they are healthier. And you know that you have come together with us, as well as many community stakeholders, to work on childhood obesity. We have an executive steering committee. We've made some progress over the last couple of years with working very closely with Cabarrus Health Alliance and the committee structure that we have in Healthy Cabarrus to address food gardens, to establish some research projects, to do data analytics around where hot spotting is in the neighborhoods where children are more obese than others and understand the drivers of that. And so we are excited about continuing this work. It's a long journey, but this is gonna be the major signature community outreach on population health that Northeast works on. For our 80th anniversary, we've had a lot of celebrations this year, but the one I wanted to share with you is that we designated $25,000 to work with each one of the municipalities to do a small project in that municipality. And these are the list of projects that our community relations people work with, these municipalities, to fund with the $5,000 grant. In Concord, it's an art project at the Hector H. Henry Greenway. In Kannapolis, we're working with them on plans to create a green space behind the city hall, connecting the Greenway. In Mount Pleasant is to renovate the room in the Eastern Cabarrus Historical Society and Museum, the medical exhibit room. There, I understand there's a lot of very valuable history in that room that should be preserved, and so we, they will use the funds to preserve that material. In Harrisburg, we're gonna put seating in, the Veterans Park Gazebo at Town Hall. And then in Midland, we're going to work with them on a butterfly garden in recognition of our 80th anniversary. So we're excited. Those were small projects, but it gives everyone an opportunity to help us celebrate the long history that we have of providing healthcare in this community, and we were happy to be able to do that. And we thank you again for your support and all that you do to help us be a better organization, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Winget?
I don't have a question, but what I would like to tell you is that I really appreciate you coming tonight because this, because we're on TV as we are, a lot of people watch it. I'm always surprised how many people watch it, but to, for them to be able to hear what you've said and understand the impact you have, you and I've had this conversation before, we are extremely, extremely lucky to have you as part of this community. There are many communities across this whole state that would beg for the hospital facility and everything that's a part of that, that we are so fortunate to have here. And so thank you for being here, and thank you for taking the time to be able to share your message that's gonna now be able to go out. It's one thing to read it in the paper. It's another thing to see your presentation and to hear you and to know how much you care about this community. So I want to thank you very much for being here and everything that you've done, and I'm thrilled to hear that food security is one of your areas. That's a big area of food deserts and what's out there, and we need to do a better effort at that and addressing that problem and all the many facets of that problem. So I'm thrilled that that's something that you've chosen and all the things that you just do in the community.
We very much appreciate that.
I don't know how to tell you anymore than that, but I'm just absolutely thrilled that you're here and thrilled for what you're doing for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Winget?
I just had a brief comment, Mr. Chairman, and is Ms. Winget, you know, all I can say is wow, it's so impressive of how far we've come. I don't remember the 40s, but I do remember the late 50s though, because I was born in the old Cabarrus Memorial Hospital, and there might be a couple of us in here that was, you know, way back then in the early 50s. But thank you again, as Commissioner Poole said, for taking your time to be here and show us what's going on at the hospital that we all go to, and thank God for it every day. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity again.
Yes, and I certainly would echo what has been said. I too was one of those persons that was born in that 1952 vintage picture that you showed up there. And I know that both Commissioner Honeycutt and I participated in the fellowship program that the foundation gave us an opportunity to be a part of last year, and was so impressed with everything that we saw. And it's kinda like I say to our EMS guys, you know, we never want you to have to come pull in our driveway, but when we need you to and you do, we're mighty happy that you're there. And it's the same way with the hospital. Having had two family members being hospitalized in the last month or so, I was able to see firsthand the excellent care and the excellent facilities, and certainly it's something for our community to be proud of, and I think we're very unique in that regard to have such resources here. So thank you so much for what you do for all of us, as well as, and the award that we received tonight, our EMS folks, you were a part of that. The award that our EMS folks received last year on our Community Paramedic Program, you folks were a part of that. So, I mean, we have a wonderful partnership, and we're so very appreciative of that and appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we move on now to item C3. The Cabarrus County Department of Human Services has requested the Board of Commissioners to declare September 2017 as Child Support Awareness Month. The local Cabarrus County Department of Human Services Child Support Division collects over $11 million annually on behalf of children in Cabarrus County and helps to provide the economic stability of those families. And so at this time, I would like to read a proclamation. Child Support Awareness Month in Cabarrus County. Whereas children are entitled to financial support from their parents, and Cabarrus County continues to improve its efforts at child support collections. And whereas in fiscal year 2017, over $11.6 million in child support was collected from parents of children in Cabarrus County. And whereas there are nearly 5,100 child support orders in place, working to ensure that more than 5,700 children receive financial support from their parents, and whereas children who do not receive adequate financial and emotional support from both parents may experience greater difficulty in becoming healthy, happy, and productive citizens. And whereas many concerned and dedicated judges, district attorneys, clerks of court, sheriff's personnel, and child support professionals work to establish and enforce child support orders for Cabarrus County's children, one of our state's most vital resources. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of September as Child Support Awareness Month in Cabarrus County, and urges all parents who are currently under court order to regularly pay their child support. And I would entertain a motion to adopt this proclamation at this time.
So move, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We move now to informal public comments. I have several of the yellow cards that have been turned in tonight. If there's anybody that wishes to speak and has not yet turned in a card, I would encourage you to do that now. Our first speaker, and I'll ask each of you if you would, come to the microphone and state your name and address when you address the board, so we'll have it on the record. And first up is Gail Young.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Gail Young. I live at 95 Glendale Avenue, Southeast Concord, North Carolina. I am representing Citizens in Action NC. We are a locally-based, nonpartisan civic organization, and what we, what our mission is, it's threefold. We want to first educate the We want to first educate the public about their rights under the Constitution of the United States. Second, we want to advocate for equal protection and access to those rights. And third, we want to create a climate within our community in which we have respect and tolerance. So, the reason I'm here with, talking with you tonight is we also want to ask you to consider a resolution for fair districting to our NC legislature. We are talking with everyone within Cabarrus County. Concord City has a resolution already, but we are talking to the other boards that are related to Cabarrus County and asking that they do the same. I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk with you about it, because I know that you're fully aware of the issues. I want to let you know what we have been doing, though, and what it means within the community here. We took on this as a project, and we went around and talked with constituents within your areas and to find out exactly what they felt about fair districting and if they understood gerrymandering and what that involved. We talked as much as we could. We're a small organization, so we went around on Saturdays, knocked on doors and talked to people. We didn't identify ourselves. It's nonpartisan. We never identified ourselves with any party. We just asked them if we could talk about the issue. A good deal of them already knew the issue. They asked us what had happened to North Carolina, that they didn't understand what had caused the changes in North Carolina for it to be such a biased kind of an approach to politics here. We asked them if, since they felt that way, if they would sign a petition that we could bring to you and let you know how they felt. We also asked them to fill out a card that we would take to our state legislatures. And we did follow through, and we took the cards to the state legislators. I won't say who, but one of our legislators said, and I'll quote him, "The Democrats have been doing this for a long time, and now it's the Republicans' turn." I was actually appalled by that comment. My mom taught me that two wrongs do not make a right, and it should be the citizen's right to hold the public officials accountable for what they're doing in the communities and not, not the representatives deciding who it is that's going to be in their districts so that they can ensure that they're reelected. So, that's what we're here to talk about. My next person will share with you the petition.
Thank you. Next, we have Doshia James. I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
I pronounced it perfectly. Thank you.
Good.
So, again, I'm Doshia James. My address is 571 Hyde Park Drive, Northeast in Concord, ZIP code 28025. So, as Gail mentioned, I'm here to ask you to vote for a resolution urging our state legislator to reform our deeply flawed redistricting process, which I feel the way that it's currently set up, it undermines our fundamental democracy. So, first, I'd like to redo the resolution just to make sure that I have time to get that on the record. So, county of Cabarrus resolution, whereas the current state redistricting process creates a conflict of interest as lawmakers are effectively selecting their own constituents, and whereas the redistricting process should be conducted with transparency, in an open-door manner, and with opportunities for public dialogue and feedback rather than behind closed doors, and whereas legislative incumbents generally can construct districts that are not compact and split communities of interest, and whereas important principles, including the protections of the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965 and respect for neighborhoods and counties, should be clearly listed for a commission to abide by, and whereas voters are more likely to participate when they believe that their votes will count and they will have a reasonable chance of electing candidates who represent their interests, and whereas elected officials are more responsive to constituents when voters have a choice of candidate, thereby increasing accountability and serving the best interests of the voters. Now therefore, we do hereby resolve that North Carolina's General Assembly should establish an independent redistricting process that includes the principles of diversity, along with partisan balance and geography in all future redistricting. We also resolve that the North Carolina General Assembly should pass legislation to establish a nonpartisan redistricting process. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be sent to Senator Phil Berger, President Pro Tem, and Representative Tim Moore, Speaker. So, I noticed in this resolution, when I brought it here tonight, we had referenced previously a bill that was before the General Assembly, which if they don't pass it during this next special session, that's probably not going to roll over to next year. So, if possible, I'd like to send you a revised copy just to make sure that you have the official record. So, and I also, I would like to present, if possible today, as Gail mentioned, we have been doing canvassing on the weekends. We have over 240 signatures from Cabarrus County residents where we've explained what we're coming here to talk to you about tonight and asking them to sign a petition, also asking you to pass this resolution. I really think it's important. I have, like, I've been giving up my weekends. I'm very passionate about this issue. I've been going down and talking to our representatives, Johnson, Pittman, Senator Newton, and they're not even listening to us, which I understand in a way. I get it. If the districts are not competitive, if you're not worried about whether you're going to win your election or not, then you don't have to be responsive to your constituents. And to me, that's the fundamental core of our democracy. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I give this to someone?
You can give that to our clerk, she can distribute it. Okay, next, we have Ruth Darro.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk about this problem we have called gerrymandering. And I'm not going to go into the details. I'd like to give you the emotional response I had when I researched and found out what was going on in North Carolina with regard to gerrymandering. After the 2016 election, I was in shock, shock and awe, basically, about the outcome. And I heard this number tossed out. It said Republicans won 72% of the representation for North Carolina at the federal level on 52% of the vote. And I went, really? And then, I said, well, how could that happen? And so, then, just in talking and getting involved in organizations, I heard this term called red-mapping. And I says, well, what is red-mapping? So, then, I go to Google and I type in red-mapping, and let me tell you, when I read about red-mapping, my heart stopped, and I was never more fearful for our democracy. Hundreds of millions of dollars have gone into a nationwide campaign to ensure that a particular political party was able to not only gain, but retain control. And like you've already heard, when people feel there is no way they're going to win their district, you can't even get a candidate to go up against the incumbent, because they said, I can't afford to spend thousands of dollars on a campaign when the outcome is preordained. And I have to tell you, I really hope you will consider doing whatever you can to save our democracy. I believe that's where we are. In 2010, in 2012, in 2014, and 2016, the map across the United States went from blue to less blue, to more red, to totally red, using a method of extreme gerrymandering, and I say it's cheating. We have got to put checks and balances in place in politics, just like we do in every other competitive endeavor. Can you imagine in a Carolina-Duke basketball game, if my guy is going down the floor and I'm getting ready to win and make that three-point shot, and your guy comes up and pushes me out of the way and nothing was done? Oh, too bad, you didn't make that shot. You didn't get to win. And that's what gerrymandering does in politics. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anna Roman.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Anna Roman. My mother wasn't from the South. I'm sorry.
Anna, Anna, I apologize. Spell it the same way.
Yeah, it is. It is. I live at 5738 Heron Point Place, Southwest Concord, North Carolina. I am a long, longtime resident of Cabarrus County and a member of the nonpartisan group Citizens in Action. I, too, have gone with my fellow members of my group and knocked door to door in Cabarrus County to talk with people about, with the citizens of Cabarrus County, about fair mapping. I have to put my glasses on, excuse me, sorry. Many did know about the racial, the racial and partisan gerrymandering in North Carolina. Some were concerned, some were not. Either way, racial and partisan gerrymandering has had a very large impact on the voting rights of the people in North Carolina. People have the right to vote, to have their voice heard regardless of party affiliation, and racial and partial, and partisan gerrymandering dilutes this right and, more importantly, their voice. We can no longer, as citizens, sit idly by and allow this to continue. We should be able to elect our officials and representatives, who are public servants, to the people and have not, and not have the office as a prize or a grab for power. A redistricting reform will ensure the citizen's voice has been heard loud and clear. I thank you for letting me take the time to comment.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Samantha Steele.
Good job on the name.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Samantha Steele. My address is 8389 Bampton Drive in Concord. I, too, am a member of Citizens in Action. Partisan gerrymandering has tremendously corrosive effects on our democratic system, is evidence to the electorate that the system is rigged and therefore erodes the voter's faith in our elections. Gerrymandered districts often join together dissimilar communities with no shared values or local governance needs. It diminishes our representation. The near certainty of incumbent reelection in gerrymandered districts depresses voter turnout, discourages challengers from running, as several of my co-members have said, and it means that many elections are determined by a small percentage of voters in increasingly partisan primaries. The use of high-priced consultants and sophisticated statistical models has made it possible for parties to pinpoint how people will vote down to an almost individual level and allows districts to be drawn around specific pockets of voters. These technical capabilities have only advanced since the 2011 process, promising to make the next round of partisan redistricting even worse. Politicians struggle to defend this system, this systematic election rigging. In fact, a couple of months ago, when we went to Raleigh to meet with our General Assembly members, one of them told us that he considered this ability to rig our electoral system the prize they get for winning the election. I find this deeply disturbing, as I've always considered the prize that politicians get for winning an election is the privilege of serving and representing their constituents regardless of party. I respectfully ask that you please pass this resolution presented here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Monty Coggins.
I'm Monty Coggins. I live at 166A Union Street North in Concord, 28025. Earlier tonight, you Commissioners were complimented on your transparency by Mr. Glass, and the irony of being complimented on transparency by someone with the last name of Glass was not lost on me. And I can only imagine that as a transparent board, you would appreciate the same level of transparency and fairness at our state government level. And so, I would echo what the former speakers have said in encouraging you to push forward a resolution. The court said that the redistricting or that the gerrymandering was carried out with, I remember, if I can remember correctly, surgical precision to disenfranchise minorities from voting. And that's the court finding. And I am sure that you all do not stand for that. I see the inclusive nature of what's going on in Cabarrus County, and I would love for you all to speak out to our legislators. The district, as they're currently formed, looks sort of like a Rorschach block test. They don't make sense logically. They only make sense to deliver victory to the incumbents. And so, I would highly encourage you all to take up this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes all of the yellow cards that I have, unless there's someone else that has failed to turn one in. All righty. We now move to our consent agenda. Of course, items in the consent agenda are items that we've discussed previously, previously at our work session. We do have one adjustment, and that would be to eliminate item F4. And so, that would be eliminated from our consent agenda to be discussed at a later time. Are there any other adjustments that need to be made? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the elimination of item F4.
Don't move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to new business.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question real quick?
Certainly.
The, sorry, number eight, about the animal shelter adoption event, do we have a date for that yet? It was mid-October, but I didn't know if we had a date that we could announce yet.
You know.
Do you know?
I do not know. I have not heard anything from them since the last meeting, so.
Hey, well, if we.
Well, we'll get that and get it.
If we get that, could we get it tweeted out or something? Because I think that's a really good event, and we haven't had an opportunity to get the date out, and we won't meet again until October, so.
October 14th.
October 14th. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Noon to four, October 14th. It is a, there's a grant that will cover the adoption fee for 25 animals, so on October 14th, contact Cabarrus County Animal Shelter to get more information. How's that? I just want to make sure we get that date out so people will know to go.
I think that's great.
That was pretty cool.
And if folks will watch Channel 22 or our county YouTube channel, I'm sure there will be some.
Facebook.
Facebook and Twitter. All of those venues will have information about this adoption event. If you need any additional details, you can also call us. You're welcome. Okay, moving on to new business. First up is G1, Economic Development Investment for Project Ali, and we are happy to have Samantha Grass with us to talk about that.
Samantha Grass, Recruitment Project Manager for Cabarrus Economic Development. As always, just thank you for the opportunity to present the project information to you all this evening. JJ Haynes Incorporated, Project Ali, is considering expanding their Southern Distribution Center and relocating operations to Cabarrus. JJ Haynes has been in business for over 140 years and is the largest floor-covering distribution company in the country. In addition to distribution, there is a small manufacturing component to this project as well. They are considering leasing approximately 500,000 square foot of space at Concord Airport Business Park, Phase 3, located on DeRida Road. JJ Haynes estimates they will invest 6.4 million in personal property at the Concord location. Their plans do include job creation of 172, which does include possible transfers from their Anson County location that they are currently, they currently are, as well as third-party transportation positions. Their average wage exceeds our county average wage. Their investment exceeds the minimum requirements of the Economic Development Grant. Based on the estimated 6.4 million investment, a one-year, 85% development grant from Cabarrus County is $38,080. Net revenue to the county during that same one-year grant period is $6,720. We are asking for your consideration of a one-year, 85% Economic Development Grant, and we will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, questions for Samantha?
Thank you.
As I normally say when we have these discussions, this is not the first time that we've talked about this, and we've had extensive discussions about, about this company in the past. We do, at this time, have need of a public hearing, and so, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this economic development investment. investment. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And any questions or discussions from, from the board? Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion in regard to the economic development investment proposal that has been made.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
My second motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think one of the things that, that folks might pay attention to is the fact that typically our economic development investments are three to five years. This is a one-year, so a little bit different. So I think that certainly demonstrates the flexibility that, that we're trying to have to, to work with our corporate clients. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. While we've got our Samantha and Robbie and Leigh Anne, our entire economic development team here, I wanted to make a few comments about the, the topic that everybody, I think all throughout the United States, has been hearing about over the last couple of weeks, and that's the Amazon headquarters. I would like to officially go on record to say that I think that needs to be in Cabarrus County. We have the, the best site in the nation to accommodate that facility. I've heard so much discussion about it, and so a radio program I listened to this afternoon said that this was the Olympics of corporate recruitment. And we certainly feel like that, that you guys are up to the challenge. We have a wonderful site here in Cabarrus County with about twenty-one acres of property. Twenty, twenty-one. That's what, that's what I meant to say, twenty-one hundred acres. You know, one of the topics that I have talked about many times in the past is the extension of the light rail system in Charlotte Mecklenburg to Cabarrus County, and what, that that would be a game changer, and what, what a significant impact that that would have on us. I never really and truly deep down thought that that would happen in my lifetime, but with this project and, and the potential of recruiting fifty thousand jobs to that facility, I certainly can see that that is a viable option, that we may have a shot at that. I have, have spoken with representatives from Congressman Hudson's office and expressed the need for, for federal support for that effort, and, and hopefully we'll be reaching out to our state representatives as well. We feel like the entire state of North Carolina should get behind this Cabarrus County site. And I'm sure that I'll probably get some phone calls when I leave here tonight from other counties that may disagree with me, but it truly is an exciting possibility, and certainly I think that this entire board and, and I as chair stand ready, willing, and able to do anything that we can to assist you in those efforts. And we appreciate what you do every day, even if you don't, even if every day is not the Olympics, but, but this one is. Thank you. Next up in new business is item G three, from Planning and Development, the twenty-sixteen, seventeen home program. Do what? G two. I skipped, skipped over G two, I'm sorry. I got so excited about the Olympics. From Planning and Development, Placid Road Right-of-Way Abandonment. This is an item that we'll need a public hearing on, and we're happy to have Susie Morris here to give us a briefing on that.
Good evening. We did talk about this at the work session, so this is the final step for the commissioners in the abandonment of part of Placid Road. It was approved by the North Carolina Department of Transportation as far as being taken off of their maintenance list. And they did add the new point zero two miles onto the maintenance list. So they removed the old, added the new. This was a result of the Castle Brook subdivision because of the amount of traffic, the road had to be realigned. So the commissioners will need to hold a public hearing to take in input on the proposed right-of-way abandonment. And then the next step would be a street closing order, which is handled by staff.
Very good. Any questions for Susie? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anybody to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. Okay, welcome. You would just give us our, your name and address, and feel, feel free to pull that microphone down if you'd like.
Pepper Miller. I live at thirty-six hundred Plastic Drive now. I'm just trying to get a little bit of understanding. I know that you, that was my granddaddy's land back then, and I think he gave the ownership to the city or state.
DOT, perhaps.
DOT, to take it. So does that mean that when everything come official, that it's going to be given back to the state?
Susie might be able to answer that question for us, and I think we did have some discussion about that.
Okay, where is the road at now?
This is where it was.
This is, yeah, this is it right here. That was, he, that he gave to the DOT.
So what happens is in that next step, that street closing order, that's recorded in the Register of Deeds office, and then half would go to these property owners and half would go to this side of the property owners once that's recorded.
Okay, so that is the.
Yes, if this is the property, then part of this would be added to that property.
Okay, do you know the addresses to that, or?
I'm sorry, I don't. We can look at it if you want to. We can step outside, and we can look through the file.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And at this time, we would need to adopt a resolution approving this action. Do I hear a motion to do so?
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to G three, Planning and Development, twenty-sixteen, seventeen Home Program Consolidated, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And we're happy to have Kelly Siffert.
Thank you. As you all know, we've been participating in the home program for approximately twenty years. Every year, we're required to hold a public hearing at the time that we plan what we're going to do with the money, and hold a public hearing at the time that we finalize what we've done for the year. As you all know, we have been storing up money for two years to participate with Canaplis and Prosperity Unlimited and Wesley Development Corporation in the development of an elderly senior housing project. They are in the process hopefully of closing the deal in November, and construction to begin immediately after that. They have unfortunately hit a lot of hurdles along the way, but we did not anticipate beginning construction until August of this year anyway, so we're a little behind schedule, but that's where we are. So we have not completed any units yet because we were in the planning stages of this project, so hopefully this time next year, I'll be telling you how close we are to completion.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Kelly? Okay, we do have a need of a public hearing for this item as well, so at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And we now move to item G four, from Infrastructure and Asset Management, sale of twenty-three, twenty-three Concord Lake Road. Happy to have Jonathan Marshall back at the podium.
Twenty-three, twenty-three Concord Lake Road is an office building that the county owns. You received an offer for that, conditionally accepted it. We went through an upset bid process without any upset bids, so at this point, it's before you to consider for a final contract. Our attorney, Mr. Cook, had put together some conditions that were, that had been included in your agenda as an addendum to that, and the buyers already accepted all those and signed off on that.
Okay, questions for Mr. Marshall? All right, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to accept the contract for the sale of twenty-three, twenty-three Concord Lake Road? Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, and I'm not sure if that motion needs to include the price of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I think you probably should, in my opinion.
So.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sale of twenty-three, twenty-three Concord Lake Road for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This motion includes approval of a standard sale contract with the addendum recommended by the county attorney.
And authorize the county manager to execute the contract.
And authorize the county manager to execute the contract.
Okay, and so we did have a motion on the floor already. Do you rescind?
I do.
Okay. We have a new motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Item G five, from Cabarrus County Schools, request the use of unspent Concord Middle and Harrisburg Elementary roof funds, and County Manager Downs will talk with us about that.
This, this was a last-minute request, that's why it was not on your, on your work session agenda. The schools are experiencing a little more growth than they actually expected at Patriots Elementary. They, in your budget, you approved two additional modular units there. Those are installed, and at this time, they've also, they have received an additional fifty students over and above what was filling up those two. So they need two more units as soon as possible. And the second one, and that would be for the total amount of, leave that, Susan, make sure I'm saying this right, one twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-three thousand eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cent? Okay, they've got a different one here then. Okay, one, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They also, and then the second request in Cox Mill Elementary, they, they're beginning to have some of the residential property around that school to start to be developed. At the time, their sewer line was put into the, under the right-of-way, or within the right-of-way of the street. And due to these new developments, those, those roads need to be widened, and DOT will not allow pavement to cover those. So they are asking for an additional twenty-five thousand to relocate approximately six hundred and fifty linear feet of Forest Main, and then also extend a portion of the developer's sewer line, eighty linear feet, and add a manhole. In, in return, the developer has, has offered to do the work at cost. To do this, the money, you had budgeted two roof projects at Concord Middle School and Harrisburg Elementary School. Both of those projects have been completed, and there are some, there are a hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred dollars and thirty-five cent still remaining, so they are requesting to use that total of a hundred and forty-five thousand of that on these two new projects. And in order to move those funds from one school to another, they need your, your vote of approval so they can make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Downs?
I don't think this needs to be overly complicated, but I'm a little confused on the first number, because it says the total funds needed to do what they need to do is a hundred and twenty-three, but we're only, we, the, the previous page shows a hundred and twenty, so.
That's Susan, yeah.
I guess I just want to make sure that whatever the total is that we're dealing with and talking about is the correct total.
I had an email from Ten Ladder Estate dated September eleventh. The Patriots' total request was a hundred and twenty thousand, and then the Cox Mills twenty-five thousand from September eleventh.
This, this letter is dated September twelfth.
I didn't, I do not have that one. That was the latest one I had, when we prepared the agenda item.
I mean, I guess the intention is to give them, whatever the remainder is, we're giving them that and nothing else, so whatever that number is, that's what they get. Am I correct?
I can confirm with them. The amounts.
Yeah, that would be the rounding up from the.
Correct.
Surplus that, that was existing. Okay, any other discussion? I will say that it is nice to be in a position to be able to have a project come in with some funds left over to cover other, to cover other needs as opposed to coming to ask for additional money to, to cover the original project, so.
One, one comment on the Patriots Elementary, this, this is, there is no more space left after these two to grow on that site. Their, their, their hopes are that this will hold for another year, or two, or three, until we're able to locate property and construct a new high, or new elementary school in that general area there towards Harrisburg, so.
Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the Cabarrus County School request for funding of two mobile units at Patriots Elementary and sewer line relocation at Cox Mill Elementary, and approve the related budget amendment and project ordinance. Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. And we move to G six, which is the item that I had requested to add on. At our work session, I think we suspended the rules and approved the rejoining of the Centralina Council of Government. Commissioner Poole has been representing us on the workforce development piece of, of COG, and with our membership in that, we have had a request that we appoint a member from our board to represent us at the executive committee of that organization. On short notice, Commissioner Shue agreed to attend that meeting last week and, and has indicated that he would be willing to serve in that capacity if that is the pleasure of the board. Commissioner Shue, would you, do you have any comments about the meeting you attended?
Well, I always got comments. I, I really enjoyed it, you know, be honest with you, they were like four commissioners there and a lot of mayor pro temps, probably twelve or fifteen off total, but we discussed a lot of things that pertain regionally as well as, you know, individual counties, and I didn't realize that, that the organization was that big. It's a very huge organization, somewhere around forty employees, and I, I was really very impressed and proud to be a part of this and hope that I can represent Cabarrus County on that executive board, you know, and make us proud. Thank you for appointing me, if that's what your desire is.
Thank you. I would, any other discussion? Okay, then I would make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Lynn Shue as our representative to the executive committee of the Centralina Council of Government. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And that motion passes. We move now to appointments to boards and committees. First up is. First up is H1, and this is to the Centralina Workforce Development Board. An application to serve on the Centralina Workforce Development Board has been received from Fernando Little. A letter regarding the Centralina Workforce Development Board's recommendation for Mr. Little's appointment, as well as a change in the organized labor position to a private sector position is also attached. Mr. Little resides in Mecklenburg County, so an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy would be needed for him. I would, at this time, make a motion to appoint Fernando Little to the Centralina Workforce Development Board as private sector representative for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2019, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy as needed. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to the next item, which is appointment to the Mental Health Advisory Board. An appointment is needed to fill the Mayor-City Council of Midland position on the Mental Health Advisory Board. That was the position formerly held by Mayor Kathy Kitts prior to her death, and John Crump, current mayor of Midland, has indicated a willingness to serve on that board. Would, at this time, make a motion to appoint John Crump to the Mental Health Advisory Board as the Mayor-City Council Midland representative to complete an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2018. Okay, well, you have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we move to appointments to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Sandy Lane's term on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee ends September 30th. She is willing to serve another term, so I would, at this time, make a motion to reappoint Sandy Lane to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2020. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. We move then to appointments to the Region F Aging Advisory Committee. The terms for Region F Aging Advisory Committee members, Jean Chandler and Nancy Woodard, expired June 30th, 2017. Ted Drain has resigned from his position as alternate on the committee. He has served on that committee since 2007. An application to fill that position has been received from Ida Mills. The Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee recommends reappointing Ms. Chandler and Ms. Woodard, and appointing Ms. Mills to the Region F Aging Advisory Committee. A letter of recommendation in that regard is attached to your agenda. So I would, at this time, make a motion to remove Ted Drain from the Region F Aging Advisory Committee roster, and thank him for his many years of service.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and I would make a motion to appoint Ida Mills to the Region F Aging Advisory Committee as an alternate representative to complete an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would further move to reappoint Jean Chandler and Nancy Woodard to the Region F Aging Advisory Committee for two-year terms ending June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman...
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question, or make a comment, I guess, on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee? Could we ask the regional ombudsman to look at these? On page 158, there's one, two, three, four other applications on file, and they have seven vacant positions. So could we ask the regional ombudsman to look at these applications and determine if we can't get some more people on that board?
We will certainly...
It's a great board, and, and we need more people on there if we've got applications. Let's put them on, get them to work.
We will certainly do that.
Thank you.
And I think one of the things that, that I would like to see us add to that list of applications on file is the date that those applications were submitted. Sometimes there can be some that have gone. I know we've made a couple of appointments in recent months that were declined because they had already been previously appointed to another board, so we will certainly work on that. You have a number of reports for informational purposes that are attached to your agenda, and we will move now to general comments by board members, if anybody has anything they'd like to share. I would, would say, and I, I wish our EMS guys were still here, but I had the opportunity last week to spend a day with them. I know that a couple of, of the, of others of you have also done that. That is, is quite an experience to ride along and see the situations that they deal with on a daily basis, and it certainly makes me proud of, of what they do, and so another applaud to them. If you have not experienced that, I would encourage you to do that. Are there any other updates from commissioner members or general comments? Hearing none, we do have need of a closed session tonight, and so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A, 3, 4, 5, and 6, to discuss economic development and acquisition of real property and personnel.
I'm moved.
Okay, we have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you.